... Open meeting in the public at this time. Anybody that wants to address the board may do so. At this time, we're going to check out their chance after. Go ahead.
I have to work for a second.
Yes ma'am.
Just want to let you know about Feth the Dance Thursday night. We had another excellent turnout. I think 436 tickets. People came in through their tickets in the box and I think they counted 436. So if you give and take a few that didn't do that and between the historical sighting numbers that were here to work and the performers, I'll bet you we had close to 500 people this year. And very, very positive comments about the performance and the groups that came from New York had very, very positive comments about the village, which is nice to hear also. And our sponsors again this year turned out again probably, I think I counted 87 sponsors for $5,600 or $5,700. So we lost some, we gained some, some gave us, some gave more than I believe in that, but we were very, very pleased. So just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Jerry. Anything else? Get a chance at the end of the meeting, I'll close the section. Minutes of the previous meeting of August 4th, we don't have copies. Is there any additions or deletions?
I have the motion accepting the regular meeting, commence the regular meeting of August 4th, who's that name?
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Any discussion? If there's been no discussion, all those papers, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Vote opposed, motion carried. Bills. We will have copies of bills. Do we have any additions or deletions?
We have three of them this evening. First one is New York State Sales Tax, an amount of $1,302.23, that's the July sales tax. The next one is Near Power Authority, an amount of $98,793.39, that's your monthly utility bill. And the final one is FAI Card Services, that's the credit card, that is for an amount of $1,432.39. That's on rolls for the office, a hot water heater for here, minimal night of meeting expenses, the two floor plans out here and supplies for the company.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? Yes, the $98,000 power authority bill is about, was it $25,000 higher than last month?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. We are checking into it. Can't figure that out because it's supposed to stay pretty even. We are human though and stuff. No, we have a set rate, that's for the hydro department. We have a set rate for that. We don't know what's going on. I have a meeting on the 28th of this month in Syracuse. I'm sure it's going to be addressed. Talked to the mayor of Plattsburgh today and now we're getting what's that. What is up to?
On the flip side of that, I see this one.
Well, that's nice.
You got your one way coming in, going one way.
Yeah. Any other discussion? If not, all those papers, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Vote opposed, motion carried. Okay, correspondence.
First one I have is a request for a waiver for an alcoholic beverage at the Rec Center. The social committee at Metro Customs Brokers Incorporated is currently in the process of organizing our annual employee pickings to develop the Village Recreation Park in Rosas Point. We would like to formally request a waiver from the village board to grant permission for our employees to consume alcoholic beverages during this event in the park. This event will be limited to Metro employees and their families. All Metro employees are over the age of 21 years old. We will ensure that all persons consuming beverages are of legal age, no hard alcohol or drug related, and we will ensure that every individual has a secure right of way from the event, but it does need a driver. And any individuals collecting, the area will be left clean. I did have to call because they hadn't put a date, and the date is September 6th, from noon to approximately 7 o'clock.
I'll make a motion to allow Metro to have the open container for their employee picket on September 6th.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Any discussion? If there's been no discussion, all those papers, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Vote opposed, motion carried.
Second item I have is from the Clinton County Emergency Fuel Fund, the care of the American Red Cross and plaster. The Emergency Fuel Fund has been assisting families with a Band-Aid fix during the winter since 1972 for 36 years. The fund has been sustained with donations from area churches, civic groups, and individuals. If the family needs a small amount of kerosene to get through the night or weekend, we allocate 10 to 20 gallons of fuel until they can get apartment social services. Because of the dire predictions for the upcoming winter, the committee is anticipating more people reaching out for assistance, not just for fuel, but other basics as well. Calls for the Fuel Fund are processed by the Red Cross staff and chapter after hours case workers. The committee is voluntary and its members represent many Clinton County agencies who provide emergency services. The committee has begun meeting in July in an effort to be proactive and develop a list of resources for families. We are concerned that with the impending winter and hot food, fuel, et cetera, most families will be needing the services. Some of those families and seniors have not ever had to reach out in the past. We are asking if you have any resources, a stockpile of wood, fuel, or money set aside for families in your township that we can add to our list. The committee will be conducting a series of forums for area agencies, law enforcement agencies, clergy, and elected officials for the distribution of resource information. It's from Jenny Roberts.
The next item I have was from Mr. Philip Rice of Saranac Lake to supervisors, councilpersons, recreational directors, principals. We would like each town in Franklin, Essex, and Clinton County to participate in our annual Battle of Plattsburgh Parade. Could you get a town, sports team, challenge team, cheerleaders, fire departments take part? The parade starts at September 13th, starts at 2:00 in front of the Elks Club on Cumberland Avenue in Plattsburgh. You know, the parade application and the code, I did give a copy, this is to our Historical Society. That's it.
I suggest that we pass on a line to our Carol to the recreation leader and see if there are any useful sports teams. Okay. We'll do that.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, report of mayor and trustees. First thing on my agenda is appointing a deputy clerk and also deputy registrar of vital statistics or whatever you want to call it. And I'm playing Tracy Graves tonight, and that's strictly my appointment because of me and board approval, according to the Conference of Mayors. Okay, discussion on inefficient electric heating systems. In the past, we had a moratorium on electric furnaces and boilers. That has run out and we need to redo that to get that into his own court. Unfortunately, Mr. Manay's on vacation and he can get it ready, but as far as I'm concerned, they could board your passing motion saying that they want the moratorium for another year.
I put that in form of a motion for inefficient heating systems for another year. Dan, Dana.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? No discussion, all those papers, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Vote opposed, motion carried. My second thing is discussion on cell towers. No discussion. I don't have the paperwork yet. They've not come today. Next thing on the agenda is IED, the annual meeting, October 1st. I think you all got a, you should have a paper and find out. Let's say October 1st, the empty streets, the new Syracuse. I'll be attending.
I'd like to attend to the mayor for a second. Okay. I'll put that forward. Does anybody else speak? How do we vote for it? Don't we come back Thursday?
Yeah. October 1st. I've got a motion to have a second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? If there's been no discussion, all those papers, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Vote opposed, motion carried. And the last thing I got, and I don't think it's on the agenda, is I have a resolution here. Thanks to our friends at Civil Service. Whereas the village clerk, registrar, and zoning board clerk are appointed positions by the mayor of the village, they're off the point, and it says subject of board approval, which they don't, but that's okay. Whereas the village clerk positions exempt class regarding civil service classification, whereas the board trustees, deans, and duties of the registrar of vital statistics, the zoning board clerk to be incorporated into the duties of the village clerk section 42 of the village code for the village of Rosas Point, the salaries of these three positions will be incorporated into one salary. Now therefore being resolved, this resolution, okay? I put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Moved by myself, seconded by trustee Jefferson, vote called, vote trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
I have a question before we do this, because I, is there a reason, Carol, why are we doing this simply for the village clerk, the registrar, and the zoning board?
Well, first of all, it's the next one, George, it's the one for the deputy. We don't have to do that one. It's the one for the deputy clerk.
I don't have one.
You gave me this to do. Okay, it's not this one.
Sorry about that. It was this one, but then after speaking to them, we don't have to.
I don't, I have four dash two.
I got it here. So it's the same thing, except instead of clerk, it's deputy clerk.
My question then remains the same. Why are we doing this for one and not the other? I'm not clear on that.
Because the way, it's confusing.
It's very confusing.
When I spoke with them this afternoon, okay, they said that what has to be done, I tried to explain to them that we're so small that we don't follow the same guidelines as cities and everything else, which they're governed by, to, everything comes through that. He said to incorporate, for me, for my position, to incorporate the, I gotta get this right now, the zoning secretary and the registrar position into my senior typist position.
Okay.
Like as a senior typist, that's part of my duties. Now, on the other one, it's for the deputy clerk to include the deputy registrar, because she's already going to be deputy clerk, to incorporate the deputy registrar duties into the deputy clerk position. So it's just.
So we have to do a resolution on one and on the other?
That's the resolution on the deputy clerk.
But not the one on the clerk?
Not the one, not the one on the clerk. Because that's, it's going to be incorporated into my duties as a senior typist. I know, it's confusing.
My lovely people at Civil Service. I just love them.
But what's the one you're going to read, George?
Same thing, except for deputy clerk, instead of, identically the same, except it's supposed to be deputy clerk. Says whereas the deputy clerk, the deputy registrar are appointed positions by the mayor, the deputy clerk is exempt class, civil service classification. Same thing. Said two positions will be incorporated into one salary. Anything with civil service make any sense? If somebody, somebody in this state can tell me that with Clinton County service, civil service, if anything makes sense, I'd be a happy person.
And this is subject to change. I mean, if something happens down the road, it can be changed. It has to be done. We were looking at it tonight for the two different sections of the law, for the section four, is it? I'm here, section five, 3C. It's an appointed, it's for the board that that gets done, so.
I guess I'm not clear. I understand what you're saying, but.
I was confused too, so.
I'm voting on something that I absolutely do not understand. That's my, that's my.
My understanding, I mean, I have, I didn't talk to civil service, I'm going to go by what Carol said in the letter that we received from personnel. Because the deputy clerk position is in the village code, you can add duties to that, to that position by resolution.
Okay.
If you don't want, if you don't want to add the position of deputy registrar and deputy clerk, then we have to create position of deputy registrar.
And it would vote through civil service and the village code?
Not the deputy registrar.
Okay.
But you would have to create, we've had the position.
I know, that's what I've.
That's why we were confused when they questioned it, because it's been there forever and it's like, why are you doing this? And that's when I called them. I said, can you explain to us why?
And this is, this is the easiest, the easiest thing to do, is to incorporate those two positions into one. That way you don't have to create a new position, you're only talking position, I think it's paying a hundred dollars a year or something like that.
But I guess then my confusion is then, why are, why don't we have to do that for the clerk and registrar position as well?
Because he said the zoning secretary and the registrar, he says you basically do a lot of, you know, like the typing, that type of stuff, he said, so that can be incorporated into my, part of my duties as senior typist. And that's the, that's how that.
I think we should set, tell some.
Okay, George. Yes, George.
Wow.
Anyway, that's the motion I have a second to it, roll call, vote trustee Jefferson.
Who made the motion?
It's not confused.
Well, you haven't read the new one yet.
Yes, I did.
You didn't read, you.
I did. Whereas the deputy clerk, deputy registrar, just read it from this. Has appointed position by the mayor of the village of Rosas Point, substitute approval of board trustees, which is not true, but that's all right, I don't care. Whereas the deputy clerk positions exempt class, civil service classification, whereas the board trustee's duty of the deputy registrar to be incorporated into the duties of deputy clerk, section 5C, the village code of the village of Rosas Point, the salaries of two positions will be incorporated to one salary. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Do we have to do this? I'll second the motion, but do we have to do this tonight?
Who made the first motion?
I did, because I make one, I read it.
Is this something we absolutely have to vote on tonight?
We don't have to, I suppose we don't want to. We have to get it back to civil service, we have a deadline for civil service.
Yeah, we have September 15th, right?
The other thing is we need a deputy clerk.
We have a deputy clerk, we just appointed one, five minutes ago.
I'll tell you what, Kelly, you call civil service, Mr. Gibson.
I have, it's right here. Carol and I already talked about this this afternoon, so it's right.
I'm telling you.
I just don't understand it. I don't, I mean, I, if we have to do it, we have to do it, but I just don't.
We just went through this a few weeks ago, Jared's position. Same.
It doesn't really make sense to, to go through a new, go through it and make, create a position for a position that paid a hundred nineteen dollars.
Yeah, you're right.
I agree with yours, Senator. I agree. Well, we've had a deputy registrar for how long?
I know.
Why is it brought to our attention now?
The question I have for tomorrow on the phone.
That's the million dollar question. What, and if you change?
If you know, if you look at anyone's.
Next year, if you make somebody else a deputy clerk?
Part of the duties of the deputy clerk would be the registrar, you're not going to hire somebody else to do it.
This moves the duties into the deputy clerk position. Not here, you appoint a new deputy clerk, they have those duties.
That's part of the duties, is that they would be the deputy registrar.
Well, but the other issue Carol and I talked about this afternoon in the office is the village clerk. Because right now, Carol is a senior typist who is also the village clerk. When she retires, or sometime down the road, if you hire an administrator and choose to make that a deputy clerk, or someone is elected mayor and wants to bring their own clerk into the village, they can do that. So the village needs to retain the flexibility to be able to make these appointments outside of the office positions. That's where I find it to be very confusing, but.
You feel and won't go out and take it?
No, I can vote for it, I, I.
You're just, you're on.
I just don't, you know.
I just get so worked up every time civil service calls the office. Because every time they call, we know we're going to have a controversy.
Well, we can do, George, we can do this one. My question's going to be tomorrow on the phone, why are we doing one and not the other? And why are we doing it at all? So.
You're absolutely right, I agree with you.
You appointed it, we appointed it.
That's right. And I don't have a problem rolling the duties of one and the other, it's just not making sense to me. So we can vote on it, I don't, if I can. It's okay with me. It's minor, it's minor.
Anyway, let's finish it. Trustee Jefferson, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Yes.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And I vote, I elect. In your packets, or you should have had a memo from, on the electric furnaces and boilers from Green and Long Island. It dated back from Kevin Brock in, in May of 2004, authorizing banning inefficient electric heat systems.
Yeah.
And this is from, you know, it's a memorandum from, from the Municipal Utilities Electric Association. What people don't understand, just to get their heads up quickly on it, so we don't need to spend too much time, electric furnaces and electric boilers, where they start, when they're panning like that, that's 125 amps coming online, thing like that, what it does is throw the man charge up, and then everybody else pays, because the full charge goes up. That's why they do not want them. And again, they're inefficient. And that enough's that. I don't think I got anything else on the agenda, if I got so worked up, but in my agenda.
Yeah, that's, you want to test her?
No, that's, that's very good information. That came in today. What did I do? That's a congressman from downtown, was this woman, something on energy corrections, health carrier dues, except, essential air services in Saranac Lake on the way, if anybody's interested in going. Ten dollars for members and 15 for non-members. Okay. Trustee Jefferson.
Nothing to report, Mr. Anderson.
Ooh, that's scary. Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Penfield.
First item I have is to request an executive session to discuss public works personnel.
Vote by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Burtz. Vote called, vote trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And I will.
Okay. The next item I have is a discussion that's actually carried over from the last meeting regarding the gentleman whose vehicle was damaged on Montgomery Street. I know in the last meeting you determined that we would do some checking with him in terms of the situation, I believe that was done. I think perhaps at this time we need to make a decision on how we're going to handle this. The investigation that the police department did showed that the damage that was on, the damage on his car was consistent with what he described happened. Although he did observe someone else driving out of the parking lot ahead of him and very good trouble, but they had him exiting the parking lot as well. So I guess it seems like perhaps there is much responsibility to go around. So I do think tonight that we need to make this the best kind of handle. It seems that the responsibility needed to be shared between the village and the driver.
Over cost or.
The estimate he has is $1,650.20. Now, we did not, as part, I believe, of what happened after the last meeting, we did not ask him to get a second estimate. I suppose we could do that. What's the board's feeling on this?
What year car did I have? It's a 93 or something?
It's a 94 Honda.
94 Honda, that's at work right now, a thousand bucks, so.
Well, since when I have, all of my cars go that. But, you know, the thing is that you're shared responsibility. My personal opinion is bill should be a second, second estimate.
I agree, I think it should.
I didn't know. I thought, I thought that was going to take less.
We haven't received any other estimates from him, so.
And I guess when, if we stop sort of questioning, like how it's in the conservatives class going through the same area with pickup truck, and having a hard time going through the area, I would think that needs to.
Find another route.
Stop and try to get some planes or something in there, but I guess, you know, kind of sense why.
Pickup truck's a little bit harder than Honda car.
Right, right. So now you, he doesn't see that there's a problem, damage is kind of, anyway. Apparently he's, I guess, I would go, get a second opinion and get a second estimate and see, maybe he should be responsible for that thing, or part of it.
I don't know, I think we should get a one. Get a second estimate, say, hey, we go half.
Get some used parts, maybe you can pick up some used parts.
You don't tell them that before the second estimate?
No, I know that. I know that. No, there's no body damage, so you're only going to get used parts. If there's body damage, you're going to get used parts.
Well, apparently the transmission.
I guess it's a transmission.
Well, I don't know. Let's get a second opinion, maybe have Senator Cooper.
Well, I think we should set a time limit as well, and if we contact him tomorrow, perhaps we can ask him to get a second opinion in the next few days, and then we can have this up, so.
Well, I don't think he has time for it.
If he does have damage to his oil panel, in order to leak in the transmission, he would leak in.
I think it's transmission.
Yeah, well, almost all the cars are going to break down.
Yeah. They're not using the car right now.
Where, where is the car?
I think it's at his house. He's not using it. But he came in and talked to me, so he can't use the car.
Oh, he's a talker?
Yeah.
So do you want a time check in here or?
I can see if he's still working down there. You know, I can try to contact him. Send Dr. Cooper up to remote.
So we'll have him get a second estimate and then we'll take it from there. Okay.
And before it goes on much wider, maybe once you have the second estimate, you can gather and make sure he gets it there.
Yeah.
So we can put out.
Okay.
All right.
The next item I have goes back again to a couple of previous meetings regarding possibly adopting earthquake insurance and flood insurance, and Andre returned a couple of options that she can quote for the floods and the earthquake protection. It appears that the first option was the one that we had before with the flood and earthquake limits, both being $1 million, and both deductibles $50,000 for a premium of $2,663. And she's come up with an option two, which has the same limits for each of 1 million, and this time though, the deductible for each is $25,000, and the annual premium is $2,903. So you're looking at a difference of about, what, $240? So again, I don't know what the board's pleasure is, we've tossed this around for a few meetings now. I don't know. Any thoughts?
Didn't really save us that much, either way, doesn't, you know, I don't know, I thought it was going to save us some more money.
Our Senator, any thoughts?
I don't think we've had the coverage before. Door has been in existence since 1877. It's a risk you want to take, I don't know.
What do you think?
I don't know. Do we really need it? Do we really need it? I don't think we need it.
I don't think we need it.
I don't either. I didn't, that's what I thought earlier from the beginning. I think we need earthquake insurance.
I think option one, yeah. What year was it? What was the corporate?
1877.
So...
One, not a wide yet, earthquake.
We'll leave our policy as, as it is. That's fine with me. That was the board's pleasure. I have no problem with that. Excellent. Okay.
Kelly.
Yes?
Wasn't there a question before, the years prior to the flood and the earthquake on the deduct controller subject?
Mm-hmm.
And we didn't decide on that either?
Were you meaning on a regular deductible?
Yes, yes.
No, we didn't.
The increase in the, wasn't that an increase in the... That's where this all originally started, for an increase in the deductible on the, uh...
Well, there were two different, two different questions.
On the original quote, and then she came back with the earthquake and the... Because Brian had questioned it at one of the meetings.
Uh-huh.
But we never made a decision on that one either.
No.
I don't know if we want to, or, I don't know.
Doesn't look like it's saving, I mean, you go from a $50,000 deductible to a $25,000 deductible. I thought it would be like thousands of dollars, but obviously it isn't, so...
But that's only for, that's only, that deductible is only for the flood charts and, and...
The way I read this, like, if the earthquake is on the option one, though.
Yeah.
Well, the options, they're both for earthquake and flood. Option one and option two are comparing both earthquake and flood.
Right.
Right. It doesn't have anything to do with other premium, or the other deductible.
We're gonna keep it option one, then?
No.
No.
We're not gonna do any of this.
We, we already, we already voted on our renewal policy in July.
Yeah, yeah.
And this would just be an addition to that, if we decided to take this coverage. But the other question way back when was changing the deduct, deductible on our policy, and the savings was only about $1,500. So...
So, you're gonna leave that the way it is?
That would be my preference, but it's whatever the board wishes to do. So...
We'll leave the original deductible, as it is.
And you're not gonna take, you won't be taking the flood and...
Not at this time, I guess. It's, that's pretty much what people think. It's fine. Okay. Next item, also from a previous meeting, actually. Everything's pretty much from a previous meeting tonight. Um, we had looked at a sample fee schedule for both zoning and planning applications. Mike Tatro wrote us a letter, which I think everyone got a copy of, and also attached fee schedules from a couple of other municipalities in the area. Um, I just got these today, and I'd like a chance, I think, to compare some of what he's given us with the schedule we put together. So, my suggestion would be that we hold on to this for another meeting. Maybe, you know, everyone can have a chance to look at it, and, um, I know some of the members of the Planning Board are here this evening, they have a copy as well, and we can get a, a copy to the zoning board if they wish, and, um, take a look at what's there, and see if there's anything that we have not included that should be, that, that are on some of the other lists that Mike has given us. So, my suggestion would be to hold on to this for another couple of weeks. And then the final item I have tonight is pertaining to our discussion last time in terms of wrapping up the Main Street grant money that we had for beautification basically of the downtown. We did receive two additional quotes for planting, uh, trees and doing landscaping at the Village Parking Lot. The three quotes were for Jay's Nursery, $3,298.50, Green Thumb, $4,277, and GTI Landscaping, $3,690. So, I would make a motion tonight that we accept the quote from Jay's Nursery for $3,298.50 to do the landscaping at the Village Parking Lot, and I would make a motion to do that.
Vote by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Baker. Is there any other discussion?
He suggested, when he looked, I walked out there with him, and we looked at the surrounding area, and he suggested maple trees due to their hardiness, and also to blend in with what's around. So, for the western and the eastern boundary, to plant some maples. Um, but in the area where you pull in, in between the two driveways, to maybe put a flowering crab tree in there, so that you see that through the street. So, one of the trees can be flowering, so the rest will be making, so they would provide good shade for those areas, and, um, would be very hardy, so...
Just Brian said that he's pretty tight on his schedule right now, so we're not gonna put him in right away.
Well, um, he called me today and wanted to know if the blacktop was removed. I didn't know any, really know anything about it. I didn't know that...
We were here in the last meeting.
No. But he gave me a paper of what he proposed that I take out the blacktop. And I don't know if you've seen, or did you discuss with Jay on...
I did, and we also discussed it at the last meeting for him.
Because, uh, on one end, you're taking out seven feet of blacktop, with the parking lot. On the other end, you're taking out about 12 feet of blacktop.
That's a lot of parking lot.
Yeah, and, uh, my concern is the snow. I mean, that parking lot is, is used in the winter more than it should in the summer, and they're all, all street parking. And, uh, it's just a concern of where we're gonna put the snow.
And the way you put that tarmac in, now we're ripping it up. Ew, that's the whole thing, yeah.
But in the areas where he's taking it out, you can't double park. When we finally do get it stripped, what we thought was, where the areas where they were gonna remove the tarmac on the eastern and the western boundaries, you couldn't, you couldn't park two cars there anyway. Otherwise, you get blocked in. So, we thought we really wouldn't be losing any parking space. We can talk to him and see if it's possible to take out less.
Well, excuse me.
Because part of his issue was not encroaching on the neighboring properties, making sure that the trees maintain shape for the parking lot, and not having to be, you know, kind of artificially trimmed because of the neighboring properties.
It's pushing the snow up against the trees themselves, everything in it, and you're gonna kill the tree. Is there a guarantee on these trees? That if they die within the first two years?
There is some sort of a guarantee. It was written on his estimate. I'd have to go back and look at it, but, well, do, could we remove the snow the same way we do in the downtown?
Well, yeah, you're adding more work, you know? The guy that is, you know, we do the churches, we do the parking lot, or the Main Street, wherever it needs it, fire station, I mean, and all the snow removal. It's, this year, we're limited in where we're gonna put our snow. If you get the letter from the DEC that says you can't dump it on the bridge road anymore, we have to find an alternate dumping site now for the snow. I don't really know where it would be.
What would your recommendation be if we were going to take tarmac out? How much we can take out?
Well, he's showing 18 feet from the edge of the driveway as you pull in.
Mm-hmm.
Both ways. All he wants to leave is blacktop.
He only wants to leave eight feet for parking?
No, it's just a fact that, uh, that it's more than discussed, I don't know.
Um, here. And, uh, all feet. It must be like, here, 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 parking, is this car here?
Yeah, you're parking, you can park up this way instead.
Is that also?
Uh-huh.
This is, uh...
Because the, the problem here was that with the depth, you wouldn't be stacking two cars anyway, because then you'd be... From where you pull in, I mean, I don't, without striping there, it's very hard to tell.
Yeah, yeah, they park all over, that's your point.
This is too wide for one car as you pull in, and you can't put, you can't put a car here and a car here, because this side's blocked in.
No. Usually now, they pull up way away, so they have room to pull in.
People are seeing, they're making things interesting. From the edge of the sidewalk.
I don't know, we just did, uh, Jay, this week and discussed it.
Move on, move on.
So, I guess then, are we a vote on the quote?
Yeah, we gotta vote on the quote, yeah. I don't have a vote on the quote.
Well... And then we at least agree, though, that we're gonna put the trees in the parking lot?
Well, I think we did.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, we can award this quote. I mean, we can, we can choose Jay as our landscaper, right?
Yeah.
Sit down with Jay.
Yeah.
Just work out the details.
I mean, I just don't wanna go there and cut out all this blacktop and have to say, you know, geez, we didn't think there was so much blacktop coming out.
What's that?
We're, we're gonna look at it.
No, I mean...
We have an award. Yeah.
We can award it.
I did.
Move second. Uh, moved by Trustee Penfield, seconded by, uh, Trustee Mertz. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield. Trustee Mertz.
Uh, I have a discussion about the quote for the asbestos abatement on 115 Lake Street, which, uh, we now got a call from Carol last week. Uh, to the original company that was gonna do this, can I do it now? So, we're gonna, we gave the bid for the second, which was...
OTC.
OTC?
OTC.
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 Or some of...
3,000...
That's the best we can do, shingles and the asbestos, uh, property that we have on...
And I think, I think, uh, we'll wait till it, but if things work out all right, on their school job, they're done, and they wanna start right down there and meet it with, I kind of figure.
Okay, good. So, let's do it.
They, uh...
They got the bid?
They're waiting, they're waiting for the test to come back.
It's already been decided.
And they already been awarded the bid.
Already been awarded the bid. I just sat down, wanted to make a public, Carol wanted to meet a meeting.
We have, we have to make another motion to...
Oh, make another motion to award that bid, too.
I'll second that. Moved by Trustee Mertz, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any other discussion? There being no other discussion, all in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That it, John?
Not, while I do have one other thing, it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to bring it up.
And I just didn't, I, I gave you all a copy of the, uh, from Earth Science Engineering that there's gonna also be a, um, ESBC, we ended the initial asbestos removal survey. He's, they're gonna have to provide the service for the, um, quality, air quality, and that's just gonna be an additional $200 to $300 that we'll have to be paying.
Can't win with it.
I, but I, I gave you all a copy of the... I think I...
Okay. The air that we breathe is important. The second thing I have, I feel, is, uh, it's not on your agenda, but I'd like to have a request to have permission from our board to go to, tomorrow night, there's a meeting at the Town Champagne Garage for the Town District White Fire Department. And, uh, the reason I'm asked, I'd like to address their board to request that our, our fire department and ambulance service provides coverage for the extended northeast corner of the town line, which is, would be 9B and the Bridge Road, and which is presently, after the new contract we've drawn up with the Town District, we lost that coverage. So, I would like to be able to go, with the board's backing, to request that our department be able to cover that as a primary responder. I think it makes common sense that we service that, there would be no cost to us, insurance for liability. I, Carol, check with, um, Andre LaBard, their insurance, for our department.
There's no, no, absolutely no.
There's, should be no problem. And, and I've spoken with both fire chiefs, uh, Michael Blah and Chris Chumblay regarding this, uh, be addressing their board, and they thought, they both thought it would be a good idea. Uh, maybe attitudes have changed, and maybe we can, uh, get some resolution to this for the public's sake. With the board's permission, I guess I put that in form of a motion if I need to.
I'll second that. Moved by Trustee Mertz, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Gary.
You want to call that?
Thank you, John. Trustee Baker.
Okay, trust of the upgrade of the computer from the civic center. Michael Bryan has, uh, built here for about $128. I have a motion, I mean, except, big, uh, computer system, would be controlling everything. Vans, everything.
He's just gonna take, yeah, keep the money around.
Yeah, he's gonna take it, the money, I guess, in the nitrogen and work, I hope.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. Moved by Trustee Baker, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Second thing, which authorized two employees to attend the NYRWA Grade D certification course.
That's the boys that work in the ditch. Yeah, I'll second the motion. I, Trustee Baker, seconded by, uh, Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion?
Do we know who's going, or no?
Carol, we know who's going, or Bryan?
I'm waiting for Bryan to...
Adam for sure, and I'm waiting for Junior to give a response back, because his Class B water license is, uh, expired. Right now, Nelson, John, Bernard, and Tim Bennett hold valid Class B water license.
Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Already requested for, uh, executive session anyways.
Pardon?
I would request an executive session to discuss contact and voting issues.
I'll second that. Moved by Trustee Baker, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Roll call, vote. Trustee Jefferson, aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Mertz.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. That it, Parker?
Yeah, that's it, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Uh, Carol.
Hello.
Arson.
I just want to report that our new worker, Tracy Gray, seems to pick up things very well. And I also would like to commend Becky DeSau, our deputy treasurer, for professionalism and hard work during that transition period.
Very nice to hear. Seems to be getting on very, very nicely. That it?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Bryan?
Yeah, I'd like to give the board an update on the transformer that we sent to South Dakota. Um, we expect it back within 30 days, during the final preparation of it and testing mode. So, we should be seeing that, and I'll be going back in service once it comes back. We're kind of at a standstill for our work for the YF separation. We're waiting for some more equipment to come in, so we will be probably working on Delaware Street. Okay? The, the street department did the tap at the school today, and the 12-inch water main doing the service for the school. We got the okay from the health department, and tomorrow they'll be doing a tap on the serpentine piping, so they can drain the serpentine piping for the paint, so they can get ready when they paint, or whatever they have to do.
Up the dang, so... Is that a vote, Parker? 100%? Is that a vote?
Don't stick your nose out.
It's getting late there.
We have not done well on that. Is that it, Bryan?
There's one other thing, and the cobblestones, you can, you see that the guys have been working on it. Um, I had them pretty much close it up for today, at the end of the day, because I need to take them off it for a few days. There's some sidewalk repairs that have to be done. I received a complaint from a lady on Frat Street that, uh, almost fell along the old
I received a complaint from a lady on Frack Street that almost fell along the old Green Union parking lot, where it's all tarmac. So there's a little bit of sidewalk repair that we want to get done before the cold weather comes, because we can do the cobblestones until the cold weather, because we don't want to be dumping sand and salt on this fresh cement. It takes time to cure.
Question, Ryan. Are you going to replace that tarmac with concrete sidewalk?
As far as the Green Union parking lot.
From Lake Street up?
Well, the state put a new rip to the tree.
Yeah.
And it's probably like one four, maybe twenty-five blocks.
Well, I don't, I guess, curious.
That's where it's really, the blacktop's all crushed and...
That was one of our wonders that we should have never done.
But if there's any other spots through the village that needs sidewalk repairs, let me know. I mean, everybody walks and if you know of any trip hazards or anything, we're going to also repair the piece in front of the rec center here that we have the problem with in the wintertime of frost even. So we're putting that into work when we do the local orders. If there's any other repairs that have to be done, just let me know and...
What, what I'm going to put the dirt on, uh, Montgomery Street from the sidewalk rolling over our, our magger?
What I like to do first is put, uh, an edging of stone along the blacktop, so if the truck goes off the blacktop, it'll hit a little bit of the fresh stone and less chance of breaking off the edge of the tarmac, and then put topsoil. It has to be done. We're limited on crews and everybody...
It's kind of dangerous, you got to drop it, you know, five or six inches. Might have been responsible for the lightning, hit everybody's own vehicle.
Yeah, I don't know if the board knows, but one of the cement holes down on the waterfront guy hit Friday night. Between the hours of five thirty...
Five thirty and seven.
Well, it could have been, might have been.
No, I would buy at five thirty, but it's fine.
We had a spare top. We still have to straighten the hole a little bit, but it's concrete hole, and it took the hit. If it would have been one of the lumen holes on Main Street, it would have been...
Whiteout.
It was a good investment, put with concrete.
Yeah. Well, I was just sitting there thinking, it would have been a drop there.
Yeah. Once we get these water taps done, the street crew, then I can divide the crews back. Right now, I haven't divided the two crews. We're trying to do the water taps and we're trying to do the sidewalks, so once the water taps are done, I can put Nelson and Junior on the edge of the roads, looking on that.
I know you have a lot of work.
Put that on your list, buddy. While we're on talking Montgomery Street, Clinton County will be in here this week to give us a dull yellow line down Montgomery. Also, those signs that we discussed about sticking the crosswalks, we don't need state approval, we can put them on the state highway, we can put them anywhere, I just got a letter from the state saying that the state had said years ago, anything for crosswalks can be put in, all they may ask is that, don't know whether they'll take it up. So we need to figure out how many we need and get them on order and get them in. And we need to put the crosswalks out on Montgomery Street.
Can I ask, when they, when they do the line work on Montgomery Street, are we going to do parking areas from Lake Street down to here?
I don't think they get the county to do that.
Okay.
Now, why you ask that?
They borrow the machine for white.
Why, I talked to, why, they have a machine to do that, and they say, hey, someone want to borrow it? Fine, but what they suggested, that we do everything we have to do in one shot, because the cleanup on the machine is quite extensive after this. There's no set doing one stripe and...
Exactly. There are a bunch of jobs, right?
Get it, get it all planned out, and then we can borrow a machine and do it. With that, uh, I open the meeting to public. If anybody want to address the board at this time, they do so.
I have a question about the electric rates, and I don't really understand how you do this, but you, do you sign a contract with somebody for the, the good electric rates in the road? That's the way you do that?
No, 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 no. We have, um, we have, uh, an agreement with the power authority of the state of New York, right, that we get, I, hold me to this figure, I want to say twelve to sixteen megawatts of hydropower, right? And that is supposed to be at a set rate, and that contract runs out two thousand twenty-five.
That's what, that's what I was, two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah. And we don't know why we're getting a high bill this time. And then anything we use over that, which we use every single month, we are in incremental power, is done through the New York Municipal Power Agency, right, which is at a much higher rate, but still a lot lower than gas electric. And that's where the ISO came in and hit us, and just to give you a heads up on that, uh, Schumer, Schumer has pulled in on it, and wants to know why FERC is to go after the ISO and give us answers why this happened, because he doesn't understand it either. Why they sent power all the way around Lake Erie back to us, and then we had to pay for